We are live, Trudy.
Thank you, everybody. You join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to do a little sentence for Jerry and Gerald Schley. One tech member of our LaSalle Library Board, just a strong member of the community, one of our pillars in all that. Saint High City's big leader, Redneck Lloyd, but very involved in the city. We have to keep him in the stand and across tonight. The Pledge of Allegiance stood by the United States of America and stood in the honor for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. One thing I really thought was amazing was that one of the three, thirty, thirty gallons of blood only, that's a lot of business. Public hearing, I'm sorry, we'll call.
Alderman Baccador.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Patack. Reynolds.
Present.
Laveri.
Present.
Jepson. Hernan.
Here.
Crane.
Here.
Public hearing.
Okay, I move that we open the public hearing regarding appropriations ordinance for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Second.
Moshe, Val, and Laveri, so on Hernan, all favor.
Aye.
Yes, motion period. John Dugby went through this pretty definitely with the aldermen, it was open to you, we want to call. I'll be as well, give them a chance to address their questions outside. Obviously, this is a budget we use, appropriation budget. City staff was together, obviously, all the crew of the alderman, and we just have a chance now for one more chance for a public input. Everybody wants to take that time and ask any question about it.
Just adding to that, Mayor, pursuant to sixty-five ILCS five-eight-two-nine, Chapter twenty-four, which is applicable to us. We're a community of less than five hundred thousand. We shall pass an ordinance within the first quarter of the fiscal year, which the fiscal year started on May first, though this is, we are still within the first quarter, being in the, our last meeting in July. Also pursuant to sixty-five ILCS, we have to, at least ten days before the adoption of the ordinance, the corporate authorities of municipalities over two thousand in population shall make the proposed appropriation ordinance formally prepared and appropriated or budget document, which is the annual appropriation ordinance, conveniently available for public inspection. Brent Bader did list that on our website. We also put it on the two bulletin boards located in our lobby area. In addition, we have to hold the hearing, which we're having today, and we also have to give notice of that hearing ten days prior to the time of the public hearing, which Brent satisfied that completion, or completed that as well by noticing in our newspaper, which I believe that
July sixth.
Went in July sixth. It was a Saturday, I believe, July sixth, so that was in there as well, so. As far as I'm concerned, Attorney McFederin can verify this, we are compliant with sixty-five ILCS as it pertains to us.
So to the provisions that you have read, we, to my knowledge, are compliant based on the representations made and the publication principle. From what I understand, it was also on our website, correct?
We did have that meeting, the open meeting, as you, you had indicated a while back ago, to prepare for this and really go through it, line item by line item. Since then, I have not heard from any aldermen with any potential changes, so this is pretty much, there was a couple of numbers that I had to fix in terms of having them transposed or, you know, small things, but cleaned it up a little bit, but nothing significant or impact changes to what we had proposed.
And that meeting was also open to the public, the prior one that you had, correct?
That is correct.
Obviously, all of them, Dan, all of them, Jepson, and I'm not here, as you go on it, but I don't know if you guys heard anything. Were they disagreeing or anything? I know that we did, they were piled up.
No, it's fine.
Just for point of order. Anybody like to speak tonight on the, on the, this is for the, uh, public hearing regarding appropriations. See the unappropriation of the budget tonight. We'll do about ten more seconds, then we'll go ahead and motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I'll make a motion, we close public hearing.
Second.
John, Crane, and Val Thompson, they both, public hearing, all favor.
Aye.
Yes, motion period. Other comments?
Lisa Dias, Fourth Ward. This is at least the third time I've been here about my concrete driveway. I've been very nice about it. I was told it would be taken care of in the spring. Spring came and went. Now summer's rapidly growing. You guys did that to my driveway. It's a mess. It's cheap, broken concrete. We got our property taxes. Of course, they went up, and I look, we have to pay our taxes. I'm trying to believe in LaSalle, but you need to take care of your residents, especially something that you did to our property. People wonder why people are pissed. We have the EPA, Caris fire, and now our own city. And then I get promises. You know how much driveways cost? Well, you probably know better than me, but that's a huge part of a person's property. Is it gonna get fixed or not?
Brian, go ahead.
Can I answer?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, it's on the list. I walk the streets, and we have the sidewalk program going now, and that's gonna be part of the repair. So it is on the list. It just took a little bit longer. It will be done this summer. It will be.
Can everybody hear that here?
It will be.
Everybody's hearing the same thing, so I'm not nuts. All right, thanks.
Dawn Hicks. First, as far as the air monitor, zeroing out in its readings is just that, a zero. When it's not registering, it will have two hyphens. For you guys to have supposedly had all this time talking to IQ Air and looking at the results, I thought you'd know that. Doesn't matter, though, right? Second, since a few of you were so eager to make excuses for old Inga and Peter with the Maytag building permit, here is a photo from May fifth, twenty-twenty-four, so fairly recent. It clearly shows all the windows were intact, but doesn't matter, right? Patrick, did you put the lock on the outlet that provides power to the air monitor? No. Or, I'm sorry, Kevin. Did you put the lock on the, the outlet at the air monitor out at Rotary Park?
I did not, no.
Okay. So, right, you're making statements that aren't even accurate, because you guys don't talk to each other. Why are we removing handicap signs at the mansion, especially if they're gonna go right back up next year? Seems like a waste of time and energy and money. Some of you wanted to make it very clear that the sweeper was already in bad shape because of its being eighteen years old. If that's the case, then why didn't the city start saving up for a replacement sweeper years ago? Oh, and to be clear, since there seemed to be misunderstandings at the last meeting, the street sweeper did not clean the streets the day of the explosion. It cleaned Seventh Street where Caris had a significant spill on March sixth, twenty-twenty-three. But doesn't matter, right? Alderman Baccador, I know you have expressed that you think we're all assholes. Well, if wanting a safe playground for children with all abilities, wanting receptacles for women's feminine hygiene products in the bathroom, or for construction equipment to not be parked on the handicap ramp outside City Hall makes us assholes, then I proudly, proudly accept that title. I do wanna thank a couple of you for your honesty and help in telling me what's been really going on behind closed doors without violating executive decisions, I'm sorry, discussion, and how dictator Grove really acts. Now, to address the absolutely insane draft to change public comment yet again, in other ordinances, we don't have to like or agree with each other. But if you stand by and allow our First Amendment rights to be trampled on because we annoy you, then you are not for the people. Let's pick this apart, shall we? Section two A, intentionally or willfully annoy. Well, my sheer existence annoys many of you, so I should be fined or arrested? Obscene language is protected by the First Amendment. Jesus Baccador breaks the rule often. Is he going to be held accountable? Of course not. Being considered intense, some may consider that passionate. Section two D, loitering in an unreasonable manner that alarms or disturbs others. Who's making that decision? Section two I, remain on city property without approval after regular closing hours. So how are we to check the agenda on the city door on the weekend? Section two J, not allowed to move furniture without approval. I'm a big girl. If I need to scoop my chair a little for more space, am I gonna get fined and/or kicked out? Section two L, obstruction, buildings, sidewalks, et cetera. But construction workers here have done that with a handicap ramp. Section two R, used bathroom in non-hygienic manner. You mean like carrying a used tampon to the garbage across the bathroom? Section two S, interfere with, within any manner of business or function. So if we talk to your secretary, Jeff, are we gonna get fined for interfering with her work? Section three, being fined fifty to seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Is the city that hard up for money? Again, we don't have to agree on things, but it is all of our rights to be heard.
Hello, Dana Hicks. Just a couple things. I know when we got our water bills, just a couple days ago or whenever, there was something in there about us coming forward if we had something to say about our EPA cleanup. I just wanted to make sure that this gets brought up at the meeting and that the public know that they need to address this if they had any issues with their EPA cleanup. It was very good to see that on the water bill, and I appreciate that. And driveways, speaking of which, is ours on the list as well. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Miller. I'm here just talking, don't have a formal speech like everyone else. Dawn pretty much covered exactly where I was gonna go with this whole thing as well. Just reading the proposed changes to, it appears, ordinance number thirty, thirty-two in respects to being, being fined or paying fees to get up here and speak. I realize over the last couple months, there's been a lot of stuff going back and forth, a lot of personal, what I feel, I'm usually the guy sitting at home watching you guys on YouTube or whatever, but there's been some personal slinging back and forth between people either standing here or from your side to the public, whether it be in here or outside of here. But as Dawn said, I think when you start nitpicking at being annoyed or being offended, every single one of you in front of us tonight is an elected official. You were chosen by the people to sit here. You may not like some of the things we have to say. Lord knows, I've had a lot of communication with the mayor, Mr. McFederin. I've had it with Mr. Brown. We've gone round. Never necessarily agreed with some of it, but it is what it is. All I'm asking is that you guys be careful. Be careful what you're trying to establish here, because it is a First Amendment right. And you start getting into kind of limiting people on what they can and cannot say, whether it annoys you or it offends you. If you don't like it, get another job. You're an elected official. You are not required to be here. You can resign from your position and go somewhere else. It's great. It's all well and good. You have to, I think any government official, whether it be city, state, federal, whatever, you gotta kinda have a hard skin. You gotta be able to take things as they come. We all know what's going on between the Democrats and the Republicans, a lot of stuff going back and forth. I'm sure they're very annoyed. I'm sure they're, they're very upset about things. But they're not running around saying, well, you said this to me, so here's fifty thousand dollar fine, and you said this to me, this is a hundred dollar fine. I think that there's a lot more maturity in this room. I think, I am looking at mostly men, there's a couple of women. So when I say man up, I mean grow up. You're grown men. Do what's right. I don't think that voting yes on the proposed changes to this ordinance is the right thing to do. I wanted to go on record as being a citizen and letting you know that I completely disagree with it. Am I over time?
I know you're not.
I, I, I heard there was this time thing, so I'm, I'm kind of worried about it. But, but I think one of the additions was something to the effect of sexual acts or something being added in there. What, what sexual acts are being done within as close proximity of city buildings? I guess I don't understand that. I, I'm not sure where that even comes from. Who's, who is the, who is the one behind these changes? Is there a singular individual, or is this a collective discussion that's going on between everybody? So if you're gonna vote yes, I hope that you're voting yes because you truly believe in the changes and that there is nothing coercive behind your decision to do so. And with that being said, I will be finished. I appreciate it. Thank you so much for your time and have a wonderful evening.
Eric Dias, Fourth Ward, I just got a couple quick things. Whatever became of the shortcut to the fishing pond, is that still on, to be done? It's been a while since we've talked about it. That shortcut that's supposed to go to the pond, clear the way, if I remember right. Okay. Okay. Then my next thing, okay, I, I understand accountability, right? Everybody needs to have it. So my question is, if you're going to put in all these fines and so forth for certain things, whatever became the fines for them not having their building done on time? Were there any given, or are we just cut them slack?
There were no fines in the contract. Their fines was the fact that they're not gonna give any, send money back from the city. When you get building done, make a property taxes, and you get a chance to get money back, or do we get their building done from property taxes, rebate, rebate?
Right. So you're not gonna give them the tip money?
That's the worst, correct.
Okay.
That's their consequence. We go fine, they lose out on that and set up.
Give me just a second. John, I'm not doing a moment of silence, so if you could warn me in like thirty seconds or whenever. You ready? At the end of my last public comment, I held a moment of silence. Mr. Pen Clicker and Mr. Ice Muncher took it upon themselves to disrespect that moment with rapid pen clicking, cup shaking, and ice munching. All I can say is, if I was your, if it was your deceased loved one, I'd never do that to you. Moving on, it is my belief that any of you who chooses to support the three-minute change of public comments must not support transparency and accountability. It's not like we have many commenters, and you wanna take forty percent of our time? Of course Mayor Grove wants to shut us up. He has an election coming up, and we bring up important topics, push for change, and shed light on the truth. Shoot, he hasn't followed the rules for these meetings in how long? Let's talk about these other changes they want you to vote on. The ordinance that will cost your taxpayers dearly if anyone is diluted enough to support such egregious attacks on the citizens' most basic freedoms. All right, um, got two A. No person shall intentionally or willfully annoy, harass, threaten, throw objects, use profane or obscene language against another person, whether physical, verbal, non-verbal, that is intense, and so on. Have you lost your ever-loving mind, Grove? You really must drink the LaSalle water if you think it's not a blatant constitutional violation to remove and fine a person for annoying you or using their free speech, expression, and redress to notify you that you're being a tyrannical asshole. Section D focuses on loitering in a city building lobby or in front of a city building. Good idea. Let's let those suckers die on the sidewalk so they won't be fined. Section G, be in a state of noticeable intoxication in city buildings. I'm just going to say that someone is jaw-jacking every time we're here. Section H involves uttering profane, obscene, or injurious language directed at another person. Did you even show this disaster to your city attorney? Excuse my protected expressive speech, but do you give one fuck about the people you serve? Your police chief here claimed I made violent verbalizations and told me to use some decent language after he cornered me. What's funny is, not one curse word even came out during that debacle. It was also recorded. Section nine, would literally make it findable offense to seek help, protection, or a safe haven after hours. Shocker, screw the poor abused moms. Section J, would rail you for moving furniture or fixtures from the original placement without approval. Nobody's chair better move an inch or Grove's gonna fine your ass. Maybe you're catching on to my reasoning for the colorful language today. Section K, interfere with free access or passage. Um, Mayor, wasn't it you that knowingly had the machine blocking the handicap ramp last meeting? Section L, obstruct or interfere in any manner with free and uninterrupted use of property or with any business lawfully conducted by anyone. That's literally what you're infringing on. Section P, listen to electronic devices in any city building that's audible within five feet without the use of earphones. Sounds like an attack on the hearing impaired. Section R, use the bathroom in a non-hygienic or irresponsible manner. Well, good thing I did that tampon demonstration, right, Mr. Baccador? Section S, do not act, harass, disrupt, interfere with, or obstruct any, or in any manner, any city, public, or government business. Yep, if one of us peasants speaks out a turret, it's a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine. And section U, refuse to depart from any city building or city land if requested to leave. What are you, God? I'm already limited on time or I go deeper, but I'll again request a meeting with Mr. Grove to discuss our protections. You better remember what we both have. Somewhere between the United States and Illinois constitutions, state and federal law, Cohen v. California, Chaplinsky v. New Hampshire, Cruz-Guayas v. Menard, Tinkler v. Des Moines, Gilchrist Knuff, Smith v. City of Cummings. Don't worry, there's more. Uh, we are indeed protected from this nonsense on nearly every level. If you councilmen don't vote against this, it will be sufficient enough to chill free speech, expression, and existing on public property. You all owe it to the people to follow the law and the oath you took. Do better, Grove. Thanks, John.
I just have a couple of questions. My name is Gary Hammer. I'm from First Ward. I'll be running for mayor of LaSalle in April. Brian? I noticed when they asked you a question about the driveway that you had to refer to, to see if you could answer the question. Alderman? This is embarrassing. This is embarrassing that you don't have enough free speech to be able to answer a question. Because during public comment, we have to all keep our mouths shut? You guys are supposed to stand up for the public. Do you wanna say anything, Bob? It seemed like-
I will. No, I will when it's my turn. I don't answer the questions out here because it just drags everything out. I will address a lot of questions.
Yeah, I see. We really don't wanna waste anybody's time.
No, no, it's not about wasting time. It's about getting my time. Doesn't matter. Nobody has to defend me. If Gary wants to question me, I'm here right now.
The question I had was, I felt as though you wanted to say something.
I'm showing you that I'm gonna say something. I got notes, but when it's my time, I will. Always taking your phone calls, always trying to help you, as I have other citizens.
I have no comment, I have no comment to you personally. I have comment to all the aldermen that won't speak up and do something about this. I haven't, I haven't read the proposed ordinance. I just happened to finish up golfing early and thought I'd stop by and see what's going on. And this is embarrassing. It's completely embarrassing that we're doing this to our citizens. There's people in this room right now that love this city, that would do anything for this city. And we're gonna, we're gonna shut them up? We're not gonna let them come and talk? I remember when the group came from the golf course that wanted to talk about thirty mile an hour that we approved. You loved it that they were all here and people had attended to see what was going on. Now, all of a sudden, we're gonna shut everybody down that has a comment? John, my second question. Who wrote this? Who came up with this? Is there anyone that can answer that? John, can you answer?
Gary, it's, there's been personal attacks against employees of the city. We're, we're elected officials. We have to take it. We can handle it. But we're also obligated to protect employees under the law from personal attacks, and that's what's prompted it. And that's what- And most questions get answered during the meeting, Gary.
I've been, I've been to numerous meetings, and you guys aren't talking. You're not talking to us. You're not telling us what you feel. You're not telling us what's going on inside you. We can't figure it out because you're stifled. I looked at Brian. I couldn't believe it, that you could not answer the question about the driveway. That you had to refer to him before you'd open your mouth. This is embarrassing.
Your Honor, I request we give the gentleman one extra minute to voice his opinion. One extra minute. Hold on, he's got it. It's not seconded.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held July eighth, twenty-twenty-four, based on file, each alderman has a copy.
No, sir. Moshe, Val, Reynolds, and Val Baccador, all favor?
Aye.
Against, motion period. Discussion and protection action on the following-
Variance from Anthony Sandegroth regarding consumption of two-and-a-half car garage with ten-foot addition to existing home on premises commonly known as five-seventy-eight Union Street and related matters.
I move that we refer this to the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
Moshe, Val, and Gary, so Val and Reynolds, all favor?
Aye.
Against, motion period. What's the officers?
Building inspectors report for June two thousand twenty-four showing total fees collected of three thousand two hundred and thirty dollars with total value of construction of three hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Your Honor, I, I move we accept the building inspector's report as we're-
Second.
Illinois Department of Revenue report showing sales tax collected for April two thousand twenty-four of a hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-two cents and home real sales taxed at ninety-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-one cents for a total of two hundred and one thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and three cents.
I move that we accept and place on file the Illinois Department of Revenue sales tax report for April twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Discussion potential action regarding bid awards to Vissering Construction Company of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars for East wastewater treatment plant, fate, replacement project, and related matters.
Actually, gate replaced.
Sorry, thank you.
Kevin, uh, everything's up to snuff here and I have this and everything.
I believe Brian had this one.
Yeah, uh, that, uh, gate replacement had some, pretty few leaks in it. And then, uh, the estimate was actually around two hundred and fifty thousand, so we had good bids on it, we only had one bid. But it, uh, well within the, or thought it, actually numbers when we first talked about it were substantially higher than that too. So, him and, him and I.
Your Honor, I move that we award the bid to Vissering Construction Company of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars for East Water Treatment Plant Gate Replacement Project and Related Matters.
Second. Second.
Alderman Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Levery.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Discussion potential action regarding the recommendation of the Finance Committee regarding request for monetary donation of four thousand dollars to Illinois Valley Pads Homeless Shelter and Related Matters.
The Fin, uh, the Finance Committee, uh, voted six to zero to grant the donation of four thousand dollars to Illinois Valley Pads.
Second.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Levery.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Baccador.
Aye.
Discussion potential action regarding the recommendation of the Finance Committee regarding the purchase of a Pierce Enforcer fire engine and related matters.
After discussion with, uh, Fin, uh, Finance Chairman Patac, Finance Director John Duncan, and Chief Jerry Janik, uh, we, the Finance Committee voted six nothing to purchase the, the pumper fire truck and ten annual payments of a hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and eighty-one cents per year.
Second.
Alderman Reynolds.
Aye.
Levery.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Discussion potential action regarding the recommendation of the Streets, Alley, and Traffic Committee regarding adding two Hagler-Carris Mansion parking signs to north side of Seventh Street between Sterling and Union Streets.
Your Honor, it's a recommendation Streets, Alley, Traffic Committee to install two signs, one on each side of, of the driveway. I think we believe it said mansion parking only, uh, on, on the north side of Seventh Street on either side of the driveway.
Second.
Alderman Levery.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Nay.
Oh, and Reynolds, sorry.
Aye.
Thank you. Four two. Okay. Planning Commission Recommendation Regarding the Request of MAV Restoration LLC by Mark Boss, Owner for the Issuance of Special Use Permit Related to Proposed Construction and Operation of an Approximate One Half Acre Solar Farm on a Portion of the Premises Commonly Known as Star Rock Family Campground, Seven Fifty-Seven East Thirty Twenty-Ninth Road, LaSalle, Illinois, and Related Matters.
I have the motion here. A move regarding petition M A V Restoration LLC by its owner Mark Boss and request for special use permit related to proposed construction operation of an approx. one-half acre solar farm on the Portion of the Premises Commonly Known as Star Rock Family Campground, Seven Fifty-Seven East Thirty Twenty-Ninth Road, LaSalle, Illinois, AKA Four Brothers Road, with the specific location proposed solar farm to be northwest of present campground structures and be furthermore specifically described as being approximately one-half acre to the south of the northernmost tip of the parcel and move that we find petitioner's request to be in the overall public good furtherance further consistent with the purpose and intent of LaSalle Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Ordinance. It is further compliant with the City of LaSalle Ordinance as regard to the granting of special use permits. Thus, I also recommend the petitioner's request to be regarded subject to other terms and provisions of LaSalle City Council. Um, this was approved by the Planning Commission.
Second.
Alderman Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Levery.
Aye.
It was unanimous, there were no objectors present, Mr. Boss is here if anyone had any questions. And, uh, he also agreed that the specific location would be, uh, in an area acceptable to the city engineer and the building inspector and to abide by all other city ordinances.
Thank you. All business.
Your Honor, I believe after hearing from the crowd, I'm not sure how all the other aldermen feel, but I believe, uh, the amended changes to all ordinance number thirty thirty-two. I believe that, uh, we as a group, I think we may need to sit down in executive session or have a special meeting with executive session to discuss this ordinance a little bit more, cool down the heat and the temperature of the city, cool down the crowd, and, uh, all work together and see what we can do to, um, not publicize us such as bad people.
Second.
I don't know that an executive session would be appropriate in regard to discussing this ordinance.
Did we skip the?
I can also indicate that for the record, this ordinance.
I brought up new business before we got to that ordinance. That's all I gotta say.
Are we gonna discuss it at this time then? What he's discussing?
Let's wait till we get to the ordinance, we'll just read more down.
When we get to the ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
On new business, it's actually kind of old now, but this afternoon, uh, we had a fire, uh, on Ninth Street, uh, the area, and I appreciate out here to meet with Chief Janik, he got out of here in a hurry and all our folks who responded so quickly. Hammer was there quickly, uh, he did a nice job, we'll be, thank God, never mind, number one, thank you, please, sir. Appreciate that quick response. I just want to remind everybody, August eleventh is actually the last day of the food bowl. Uh, that people are like, what? It's pretty simple, um. One reason that is because our staff like ours, people are full, go back to school, some go back to college, so we don't have the staffing to, uh, broken, so. Just, you know, some work accounts for that. I do want to work, uh, let everybody know that August thirtieth is July twenty-second. Um, we still have, uh, bids going out for work. August third, be led by the county, the state, and that'll affect Eighth Street basically, present over to Sterling and then the Richard Hallett, uh, highway, shortcut, right? And just remind everybody, there's, there's, there's a lot of times, a lot of this is charging season, so this is being patient from our July twenty-second. Uh, I would definitely be concerned too if it was October twenty-second. But we have plenty of time to do it, and we made that payment, we'll do it, there's other driveways, people add to that, we'll get done. Make sure those are going to, uh, we're on the list, so, thanks to your patience. Uh, maybe people might be concerned, saw the first work, the, uh, work coming in to get done, bringing that with it for the summer, but we still have a lot to do, so. Bear with us, we're gonna get done. Special potential action following official ordinances.
Ordinance appropriating for all corporate purposes for the city LaSalle, LaSalle County, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, and related matters.
I move that we approve the appropriation ordinance, uh, that we discussed at the public hearing and at a previous finance committee meeting for the year beginning May first, twenty twenty-four, to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Each and every alderman has a copy.
I'd like to second that, Mayor. I'd like to also add that, uh, John, you did a fine job. So did all the city staff and working with the mayor, I tried to get, uh, the costs under control, thank you very much.
Alderman Crane.
Aye.
Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Levery.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Thank you. Ordinance amending the LaSalle City Code provisions, including but not limited to ordinance number thirty thirty-two, further amending rules concerning regulation of public comment and related matters.
Everybody knows how I felt about the first ordinance that we passed regards to limiting First Amendment rights within our council chamber, and that has not changed. I don't know where this came from, that's why I couldn't answer. Um, I would love to answer Mr. Hammer's, but I didn't know where this came from. That's the end of that. However, after looking at this ordinance proposal at length, uh, I don't want to relist all the, uh, Supreme Court decisions that were already listed. Um, but Cohen versus California, everything that we're doing, we can make an ordinance. We can make an ordinance, we can pass it all day long. And if it doesn't abide by the Supreme Court of the United States, what did we do? Why did we waste money on legal fees to write up something that we can't enforce legally? We can't enforce it. I can go down this list just like everybody else can. The majority of the things on here that I agree with are already covered by state law. It's covered by state law, we don't need an ordinance unless we're trying to keep the fine money and not give a cut to the state. But I'd rather use this, have, have the hammer, and if we're gonna nail somebody, nail them with the criminal charge, not a city ordinance. I can go down the list, and there are many of these that are written, that are already lost, they're already on the books. We even quote seven twenty L I C S five slash eleven dash thirty in the ordinance. It's a law, we don't need it, period. And if we go down the rest of the list, the majority of the words in here are arbitrary and capricious. Who makes the decisions? If the mayor makes the decisions, then it's not how he feels. If I make the decision, it's how I feel. Chief of Police is sitting right here, the man with the badge, the man that we have to support. If there's a violation of the law, law enforcement handles it. Not the city workers, not the aldermen, not the mayor. That's the person right there in his department who I support wholeheartedly. You break the law and you get a ticket, don't cry to me. However, I will never vote for something like this. And I ask every alderman up here to think really hard. And you better have read it because you're gonna be held to the same standard you hold the rest of these citizens. Which means I'm gonna violate because I'm gonna say a swear word sooner or later. Because it's just the way it is. But these are arbitrary, we don't need them, we can control what we need to control with the laws we already have on the books. Thank you, Your Honor.
Do we, uh, what kind of, what kind of movement do we need to make here? Well, I'm a little bit, okay, probably about a month and a half. You just so everybody knows, these folks up here, us nine and Amy and Jenny are the ones elected. So, the bottom row here is not elected, except for that one. And anybody in the crowd or who work for corporation know it's, it's right to sexual harassment treaty, harassment treaty. You're not, well, you're in your current, you find out where you're not, but that's what's required by law. And we do that every June across. And it's my responsibility as the mayor, as well as these guys. I am not the boss of these, I did not elect these guys. I did not tell these guys not to talk during, so people learn public comment. I said my own statement in front of every meeting, I say, guys, I'm gonna give you your five minutes, I'm not gonna talk during your time. But we'll try to circle back throughout the meeting and answer your questions. And I think we've done a pretty good job of that. And I've had some people give feedback, so the people say, thank you for asking those, not just me, thank you, Ruth, for answering those questions. But again, I'm ready, I said two months ago, and a lot of people in the public who do appreciate common courtesy, common respect. It does grow for all of us, uh, too. We, in violation of this stuff, we're held accountable too. And that's, that's what it's for too. You've seen council members and mayors now as being the most professional. But we have, especially we should just say that. But it's my job, when somebody gets berated or sexual emails or accusations, I, I said that two months ago. John Small, great, that probably have on record, it's, there's zero tolerance for it. Zero tolerance for it. Because guess what? I can get sued from John Duncan, Chief Swodzki, for not being the proper management team to, to have, offer a workplace that's safe, harassment-free. Safe, harassment-free. That's my job, and I try to do that for everybody in the city. No matter if I drink with somebody or I'm bidding a boys to somebody or texting somebody during a meeting, that's my job. So, these guys didn't sign up for that. You're right, if you think that it's okay for all of us to get ripped, I don't care. Like I said, I've been doing this twenty-one years, twenty-two years. Uh, you're right, I signed up for it, and I'm good. My daughter sees YouTube videos of some of these people out here talking with me as a costume. She laughs about it, it's okay. She knows that's what daddy's doing, that's, it's okay. I'm fine with that. But I will not subject these people who are getting paid to whoever's job to do it, so. If you think somebody loses license for that, that's fine, because I also have principle, and I will not let these guys get berated. These women get berated, sexual harassment, it's not just at this council, you guys, everybody used to realize, this is, this is City Hall. This is for City Hall.
If I can add context to this, and I'm gonna be very careful who, because I know we're all a little elevated. I don't want to get to specifics here, but this didn't, was, wasn't raised from anything in this room. This raised in the lobby with regards to, when you're, when you're collecting, let's just say, when you're collecting water bills on a monthly basis, you deal with a lot of agitated people. And an incident occurred that is not unlike other incidents I've seen in the lobby where people came to administration and said, we feel that there's nothing in place right now that protects what the, the vibe is supposed to be in the room. And they've noted in other hospitals, places where the public gathers, there are sometimes signs up to say, please treat staff with respect. And upon talking to our, our legal team, we didn't have anything on the books for this. Other municipalities did. So I didn't, I wasn't part of the crafting process, my understanding this is similar to other ordinances that are out there, but for context purposes, while it does cover in its current wording, city council meetings, the instance that set this off was something that happened outside of the council chambers.
And it will never be enforced to impair legal, appropriate public comment in a council meeting.
So going back to my, and you think of that, but yeah, this isn't just for these meetings, this is City Hall, expect all the time. That's also the work, guys, we haven't had rules and regulations, and I don't think we have a problem with it. But again, this isn't our ordinance. Obviously, it was, we, we didn't create the wheel on this, we bent the wheel. We looked at other people's ordinances. And we took, matched with things that already exist. And that's what we do a lot of times on Star. Um, right now, Cruz, three minutes. Streeter, three minutes, so we're not out of line when we have our talk, so we just serve on time. We had people talk tonight, and they had plenty of time to get a little sort of thoughts out in three minutes. I think it's a very fair, valid thing, we checked out to see what the municipal league, it's gonna go.
On three minutes, according to the municipal league, Brad Cole reducing to three minutes is, is satisfactory. I also confer with specialist counsel. Anybody can contend anything, but the three-minute rule is not believed to violate any constitutional rights as long as the public is granted. There are three minutes, and as long as, uh, state and federal law have not, uh, indicated any specific statutes on it. But it's up to the, it's up to the council. Some cities are three, some are five, as, as was indicated, Peru is three, uh, uh, Streeter is three. Some others are five, as we previously were. But according to Brad Cole, the municipal league, and according to specialist counsel who we consulted with in, in drafting this, that's up to the council, as between three and five.
We actually also asked if we could see if it'd be pertaining just to city business, and they said no. So, Jeff Pro wants no appearance, talk about the weather for three minutes, I can do that. And we're allowing you to do that. Because, you know, obviously, we would think we'd like to use this as, as community time, to talk about the city and stuff, to talk about, vote on. But again, that situation is, is allowed, and that's fine. It's three minutes, public comment, you had that.
Point of order, Your Honor. Point of order. It's, it's five minutes. We haven't voted three minutes, it's five minutes. Or it gets changed, the five or three is up to the council.
Right. So this is, in, in, to, to, uh, we'll talk about this, we talked about open committees and transparencies. Let's talk back about the, um, the shortcut a year ago, we had, it was actually a season, I always track. We had, it was actually a streets and highways traffic committee meeting. So, again, we have to look at context when people are talking about things, there was full discussion, and that meeting was for, discussed, Streets and Streets and traffic committee. That was not regular part of the meeting above the public comment, so that's not, that's totally different thing. It's a committee meeting, that's when all the talking goes on, so, you know, let's make sure we're apples to apples, that's important about knowing the rules and stuff when we talk. Number two is, we talk about transparency, and we, I can meet with two aldermen, or one alderman, and say, hey, this is what's going on, instead of, I think, what are your thoughts? Have we done that before, Alderman Thompson?
Yeah, not on this.
But what happens sometimes? You're the first one to admit it, we, we think, I think we have a direction.
No.
And then, when it come Monday night, and that's fine, maybe other information comes out, so the alderman change your mind on it, which is fine. But again, when I had those pre-discussions at a time, it, it doesn't do any good. So that's why, this is healthy, this has been a good, had a discussion, I thought, we're making here the discussion, I'm not wasting Alderman Thompson's time, I'm not wasting my time. We'll do it in front of everybody, in an open meeting. So, the fact that some things get brought to the meeting, you had subscribed it, and they were called on it, I want to say that I appreciate some residents out there though, as a request last week, when we heard that people want to have habits. I said, I think we go right now, let's have to change that. You see something on your agenda, that you want more information, reach out to your alderman. And I actually had, uh, one alderman turn to Craig and say, hey, these folks are talking about it, I said, that's great? He's like, yeah, it's great, if people want to go more information, we did it. That's the job of the mayor and the council. So, I got no calls on this stuff all weekend, which is fine, but that's why we discussed it tonight. So this isn't anything like a kind of secret squirrel stuff. This is the full agenda, it's been on for three days, four days, I haven't heard a boo on my phone call. So obviously, this isn't being shit down everybody's throat, and this is something that's a result of, again, we're all, like, we're all, we're board directors, we're nine dollars. I don't even vote, but I'm prepared for that. We had to sit house, we had to protect our workers, we did do the right thing by that, and I don't, do I think this would be a problem going forward? I hope not. But again, we're not gonna have language, we're not gonna have sleep, being all secure here, we're not gonna do it. My job is to have a, a safe environment for people. We tell the girls, the guys spending the money at the front desk, somebody's, uh, this, or loud with you, disrespectful, sir, can you please talk in better voice? If they can't, you say, sir, I'm in this conversation, please come back, and we can have a decent conversation. And we go over there. That's, that's how, that's the goal.
Mayor, can I, can I add to your speed? Can I, can I add a couple?
Yeah, I just have one more thing. So, you know, we're talking about, we're talking about money, just so we know, we had a situation about a month ago, where unfortunately, the, the, um, the notes of the meeting, please, please sit down. The notes to the meeting, uh, did not get posted on time.
Okay.
We thought they were posted online, they were already posted at the, at the police department, we always help post them, but they did not get posted online because of a glitch. We sent it off, but it went, it didn't go. One of the aldermen up here, it's not to be mentioned, you knew about it.
What was that about?
But the, the, the minutes not being posted, but you don't want to interrupt France, so now I have to pay, we have to pay the city, the taxpayers have to pay, and attorney, to take care of an open, uh, FOIA request on, on why we didn't have these posted.
I.
You could have just called Brett, you said you want to buy them all weekend, and you just said, Brett, these didn't get posted, Brett was like, sure.
I don't remember this at all, Your Honor.
I, go back to the recording, you go, put it one ahead and just said, Brett, I'll take care of this. You're a city leader.
Yes, I am.
Brett, I can take care of this, I don't want to buy your weekend, no, this is, this is something important, we're wasting money on that, because we had to do a FOIA request to say, why didn't we have this posted? So, Brett, you take care of that, we're posted, please, no problem, shh, shh, shh. You can reach out to the student, say, thank you, that's great, appreciate that, bring that to our attention. And, and it's, it's time, we move on. So, when we do government, there's gonna be times where we're gonna have to look at tariffs, we're gonna have to look at different things. And tonight's the situation where we're putting down the table, some aldermen they want it, some I don't. I, I want it, because I think it's good for our folks, we, we want to run big clean meetings, respectful meetings, we want to follow timelines, all the time. That means shutting down your business on time, that means making sure we're following the rules and posting the, uh, building permits, all those things, that's our goal. Or we make the same sometimes, you might, or we try not to. Over to you.
To Crane. Uh, just to follow up, a couple of things you said, um, talking about open discussion, um, going from here on out, I, I would prefer, myself personally, I'm not speaking for everybody, that when we do draft an ordinance, that we do discuss it first before we spend the money on the legal fees, um, associated with that. So, um, just going forward, I think that next time we want to do an ordinance, we should talk about something on the floor, as we are, and then the, for the next meeting, we can have it drafted, you know, just to get a feel for everybody, that way we're not wasting money on legal fees. That's, that's the way I feel on that. And, um, thank you for bringing up, I received an email, I was gonna address that, um, I actually got a couple, that was, and that was great, very professional, and I appreciate, uh, any email I get, I will do my best to respond in a timely manner, um, you know, it's kind of like getting a letter in the mail, though, you don't always open it right away, I guess, but, uh, I try my best, and, um, I'm very, very happy, very thankful that, uh, so, that I did have a resident reach out to me, and trust me enough to give him some information. And, uh, I would like to move forward with welcoming anybody to do that, so.
Jordan, this is a draft or, draft ordinance, and so in order to discuss it, you need something down on black and white, so that you don't miss points in the discussion.
That's why we approve it at the meeting.
Huh?
That's why we would approve it.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
I think that one just has the fees on it. Unfortunately, it was, you may get a cost money, but again, this is a brand new, we took some stuff from other committees.
Um, yeah, one, one thing I think that might be, you know, kind of misconstrued or messed with, people's opinion on stuff like this, the ordinance actually is stayed without the number on it, which it is, be thirty-three-two, um, republished. It'd be, an ordinance amending LaSalle City Code to further regulate and provide for rules of conduct for city buildings and city real estate. And one of the things on our agenda, which is posted on the door, it states an ordinance amending LaSalle City Code provisions, including but not limited to ordinance number thirty-three-two, further amending rules concerning regulation of public comment and related matters. I think that's what they got the public all in, uh, all in a hush, all in a frenzy here, is, uh, our, um, agenda, with it posted, public comment. And the ordinance not saying that about public comment, but a few questions are, if the word would slip, a cuss word would slip by someone in the audience, my question would be, are we going to fine them, or are we gonna let it keep, are we gonna let it go? I mean, there shouldn't be a, a, uh, excessive, uh, language use and stuff like that. But I mean, as, but this ordinance, um, are we going to fine them, or how's it gonna go? Or is this just for, I mean, the, the ordinance is stated here, the agenda says public comment.
Yeah, look, uh, this is, that's, this is one you're reading.
There's two ordinances, there are two ordinances, Alderman. The one regarding public comment, regarding what would happen at the council meetings, the only change in that from the prior ones, in the public comment ordinance, was five minutes to three. The others are for conduct in city buildings.
This is a city.
And would not be used to obstruct appropriate and lawful public comment at council or committee meeting, et cetera.
Okay, so you heard my question, the, that comment, are, are we going to fine someone from the audience during their public comment area?
The public comment ordinance does not have a provision regarding fines.
Okay, okay.
Does it supersede the regular order, here are number one?
I'll ask it, does it supersede the regular ordinance?
The public comment ordinance would speak for itself, and there's a reason there are no fines in that one. The other, the other, the ordinances need to be read in harmony, and there would not be a fine for public comment at a council meeting, as it's presently written, and even as the proposed amendment indicates.
I think you may have straight, I've cleared something.
Who, somebody above me says you're a fucking asshole, Bo, I'm gonna pick him out.
And it's, and it's also a draft.
Did I answer your question? If you think that's acceptable, then that, that's too bad.
There's a difference between. The mayor says there's a difference between fining somebody and having them removed from the, from the, from the, uh, uh.
If I say John Duncan, you're a fucking asshole.
What is that then? You're his boss.
No.
Yeah, sure.
Somebody said that in the public comment, should, should that person, you say we're public officials, I'm talking about people who work in the city.
I'm talking about a public forum.
It doesn't matter, you know.
A public forum.
This is part of this job. Does somebody thought me is part of this?
I'm not gonna argue Supreme Court decision that was decided fifty years ago. Read the decision, do you understand? I don't do that, because that does no good for anybody, okay? Look.
You know, if I just, if I, if I kick somebody out, and he gets back to me by the court, this is, sorry, Bro, you were wrong, then guess what? Okay, at least my guy knows I stuck up for him.
I, I understand, and, and that's nice that you stuck up for him.
And I did everything I thought.
With the taxpayers' money that has to pay for any lawsuit.
And they could sue me for not pushing that.
Well, maybe, I don't know.
So maybe you didn't know that, but you think.
I'm not his boss.
His boys can sue anybody, you are his boss.
No, I, I, you recommend I concede along with a bunch of other things. If it's legal to swear in a public forum, it's legal to swear.
The council has to prove it.
Yeah, the council has to prove it, you're right.
I wouldn't comment.
All of your friends.
I think, I think a lot of this could be solved. I'm not sure how many people know, but, uh, you know, today, there, there is a law, state of Illinois has a law, anybody dealing with the public has to take a sexual harassment test. Those people who are dealing with the public right now, who have not taken the test, could get in trouble because they haven't got the license. I work for a firm now that every year we have to renew that license, just as a bartender has to get a bartender's license. A food handler, if somebody who's a wa, a waitress, or worked with food, that's exposed, that's not packaged, has to have a food handler's license. Now, the thing about the sexual harassment license, it, it can be misconstrued as to what the meanings were. So, what, when you get involved in these things, i- it's just like now this has been blown out of proportion. My recommendation on, on this next order that we were talking about, is, is that maybe we go back and check. It was suggested here just a little bit ago, that we go back and check the, the wording, uh, in order to satisfy everything, and everyone. But it, it is, everybody who deals with the public in any way, shape, shape or form, needs to have a se- sexual harassment license if they work in a business of any kind.
Governor Bassler?
I, I was just thinking, um, an ordinance that everybody seems to feel is real important, I think we should wait to vote on it till everybody's here. Till all eight aldermen are here.
Good point.
You want to make a motion to table it?
All right, I'll make a motion, we table to vote on this till all the aldermen are here.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bassler, some on Crane, we table this motion till, uh, we have, uh, we have.
Which ordinance are we talking about, are we talking about?
We're talking about the one, the discussion we're on, which would be ordinance number thirty-three-two.
That's one changing from five minutes to three, I believe. Just so we're clear from the records, then you can consider a motion to table on the other one too, yeah. Thirty-three-two is the public comment one, that's the only change in there from the previous rules or.
So let's, we have a motion, second on thirty-three-two, Amy, take the roll.
Alderman Bassador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Levery.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance amending LaSalle City Code to further regulate and provide the rules of con- conduct for city buildings and city real, real estate and related matters.
Your Honor, I make a motion, we table this one till all eight aldermen are here.
I'll second that.
Second.
Um, Alderman Bassador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Levery.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Um, real quick here, Mr. Miller, uh, I'd like to address your concern. I just want to inform you that everything you said tonight was not a violation. It was perfectly, uh, acceptable by, by any means, it was very respectful, that, that's the type of stuff we're looking for, so, um, I, I wouldn't be nervous about if you kept speaking like that, so, thank you for doing that. No, ju- ju- just saying. But anyway, I'm gonna vote, uh, yes, uh, table.
When you did, you did your actions around and myself and, uh, LaSalle public schools, and first, again, our conversations, and then, we haven't seen eye to eye on things, but that's one of the, that's why I'm, so, so I agree. So we have that one passed, it will come out, go on next time.
Yes, and then, an ordinance authorizing the granting of a special use permit within the city of LaSalle, LaSalle County, Illinois, regarding an approximate one-half acre solar farm and related matters on a portion of the premises, commonly known as seven fifty-seven, East, East thirtieth, twenty-ninth Road, LaSalle, Illinois.
Your Honor, I move that we accept the ordinance authorizing the granting of a special use permit within the city of LaSalle, LaSalle County, Illinois, regarding an approximate one-half acre solar farm and related matters on a portion of the premises, commonly known as seven fifty-seven, East thirty, twentieth, ninety-eighth Road, LaSalle, Illinois. Each and every alderman has a copy.
Second.
Mr. Bassler, some on Reynolds, take the roll.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Levery.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Bassador.
Aye.
Uh, no need for executive session tonight, if you want to circle back on something, uh, on, um, public comment, um, on trees at N M H Park, window, uh, Kesset, our streetside traffic committee, uh, directors will go ahead and get, uh, five maple, because we were going with the best, we wanted to put on the, basically, the west side, which is, uh, third base side, uh, N M H Park, on the basic, uh, girl, uh, large tree. And also, a lot in the past about, uh, changes to, maybe having compost out there as, uh, in our drop-off facility, yard waste, uh, me, that's just not an option at this point in time. Obviously, I encourage people to do that if only once in, uh, but again, I think it's still an option, we don't have any burning, one of them burned twice a year, it's probably two to three days, and, uh, we'll just make sure that, get more down on that.
Total submitted one million, one hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-six cents.
I move that we pay the bills, each and every alderman has a copy.
Second.
Mr. Bassler, some on Jordan, Crane, take the roll.
Alderman Reynolds.
Aye.
Levery.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Bassador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Your Honor, before you, Your Honor, before you move on for adjournment, and I think this needs to be said for all of us up here in the crowd, and, uh, everyone here, just as it was said by, uh, local, I mean, uh, across the nation in here, just because we disagree with someone, we do not have to show anger, disrespect, or anything else. Just because we disagree with another human being or another cause, it does not mean that we have to show disrespect, or anger, or make bad actions.
Make a motion adjourn.
Second.